Yet. I don't believe the machine's coming. Alright, so. Let's look at the minutes from the eighteenth of July first and Teresa sent those off to everybody. You got them, right?
Yeah. You know, I have to do this motions, I have to write them word by word. Maybe I can somehow. Get it right, because I'm not too sure I, I got it right.
I read it when we made the motion to approve.
No, wait a minute. Under family subdivision, minimum lot size one acre instead of two acres and the term of resale of deeded land should be three years, okay. Under family subdivision, minimum lot size should be deleted.
Remember that I, that I had done two to one? That we were changing two to one? And you said that we should, I, I will delete it.
Let me just be sure that I told you the right thing, though.
I know you added that there was a preference for. You know, doing like half and half? Like, you know, four and a half and four and a half or three and three or something.
Yeah, but that, that's under limited, that's not under family.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna have to write. Motion, because at the time I'm doing it, from then until I do the minutes, I try to remember and it's not working.
Hey, there.
A hundred percent.
Okay. So, it is corrected, no.
Okay, that's the family subdivision. Okay, minimum size, well, that's okay, it should be. One acre instead of two, is that correct or not?
Yeah, it should.
Under family subdivision.
Yes, that is correct.
And which.
Wait a minute, no lot under two acres will be considered for exception and the minimum lot size allowed in any family subdivision is one acre.
Okay, so.
Okay.
And then the term of resale of deeded land should be three years, which we changed it from five to align with the, with.
With the counting, yep.
So that's correct.
So, what we need to do, though, is in limited subdivisions, we added. That the lot may be subdivided in one of two ways. One lot must be at least five acres and the minimum size of the second lot must be, be, be at least two acres or the lot may be subdivided into two parcels of equal size.
So what you said last time was a four split lot in one hour.
Yeah, two parcels of equal size.
So if that's the case, then let me write it word by word, because I, I wasn't like.
It's the dog.
No, no. That would be too much.
What, what? Yeah, right? The target dog. Okay, so what, what we did was, in, in limited subdivisions, we added that the lot may be subdivided into two parcels of equal size. Am I saying that right?
Okay, and I, I put the wrong thing here.
I wrote down what you said if you want to read it.
Okay, I have to change lit, to family limited, I said it wrong.
Yeah, limited, yeah.
Lot may be subdivided.
I just put into two parcels of equal size.
Into.
A split lot in one and a half.
Parcels.
Yeah.
Of equal size.
Yeah. Put an equal size.
Okay, and am I saying anything, one lot, at least five acres?
Well, that's already there.
Okay.
That was there from before, that one lot.
Alright, so that's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah, okay.
A lot may be subdivided into two parcels of equal size.
Yeah, it's an, it's an anodore thing.
Okay, but. But, so the minimum size lot should be deleted, it's not the. Was, should I, I should close that out?
Wait a minute.
I thought we weren't saying what the.
Oh, no, there has to be a minimum lot size.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, I would definitely take that out.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, alright.
Okay, so, when you get those redone, send it back out.
Okay.
We'll approve them, but I wanna, I wanna copy of that.
Okay, well, well, we're gonna.
I don't think, I, I didn't get a co, I had my old copy from last time that I walked on.
I did send the, I, I did add you to the.
I, I.
Email, or the goal email.
Look from the eighth, the thirteenth.
Yeah, it was.
And if not, we'll, we can resend them to you.
I just have the one that you sent.
You don't have one from me?
Okay.
Just agenda.
I'll pop them to you in one sec. So under old business, we have municipal zoning district, which I pushed off until tonight, okay? And then temporary buildings and uses. I think where it says these tents cannot be used for storage, let's maybe reword that to say that the tents may only be can used for construction storage, because that's what they were using it for, okay?
Okay, this case.
Yeah.
May not be used.
Tents maybe can. May only be used.
May only be used.
For supplies in conjunction with.
With, for storage in conjunction.
With construction.
Okay.
Okay, and then I think. I'm good on the rest of it, guys, oh, Rick, you gotta see him first, so don't show up. Hold the phone. One second.
So is this the right wording and decline to full approve as there are, there are no merits to the request?
That's good, yeah, that works. That works, I just sent him right.
Alright.
Got it.
You, I'm, you're gonna have to give me your email to make sure that what I have is the right thing. I got it from Mary's.
Yeah, usually, if I get something, I have a phone, I keep it in.
Maybe you went to, uh, your junk mail.
Oh, check, I don't think so.
Did you, did you get it now?
I, I guess, I got it.
Alright, got it.
Because it came from you, but.
Okay.
Okay. So the minutes of seven nineteen have two corrections.
Okay.
One, under limited subdivision, lots may be subdivided into two parcels of equal size. And under temporary building sign uses, where it says this tents cannot be used for storage, it's replaced by may only be used in, for storage in conjunction with construction.
Yeah. Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Can I do that, being as I wasn't there, is that alright, or?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
All good, alright, so. Let's go into, I think municipal is up first tonight, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, municipal. Give it up first. Um, come here, little machine. Okay, so what I sent this afternoon, and I apologize, you got it kind of on the fly. But I think we've kind of agreed to call it municipal, abbreviation M U N.
Yeah.
Okay. We've got the definition, the municipal district is established as a zoning district for village owned property in which the principal land uses support government, public recreation, police, fire utilities and public safety. I'm pretty good with that definition. Anybody, and if you're not, you can say so, okay? Okay, so we're gonna come back, the parcels, and I didn't think of this until like about ten minutes ago.
So it's a separate, let me see, it's a separate section, right?
It's a separate, yeah, that's why the section is Xed, because I need Lisa to tell me what it's gonna be. It's gonna be a new zoning district.
Okay.
Okay? We actually know what the parcels are, because remember when we, in this, Rick, this, I think was bef, were you on the board when we did R, RE five? No, you hadn't come on yet.
No.
So we went through every single parcel in the ETJ for Lisa and got all the pins and the owners and stuff, so she could do a mail merge and send out the letters to all the owners. And as we went through and did that, we identified all the lot, all the well sites, didn't we? Or did I make that up?
We identified the well sites, we.
Well, if you got a pin.
Yeah, well, I don't think we.
No, I don't think we did.
I think we talked about it.
Oh, well, in that case.
We didn't go through and, through a map and identifying all the parcels for, for this.
Okay.
I think we loosely kind of did it, but not like.
We looked up the one on Richmond just to get an idea of what, what we were looking at, the size.
Oh, alright, so. I think we're in agreement that this building, the cop shop, the fire folks, the other lot we own over this way? Right, is it this way, yeah? The swimming pool, the pickleball courts, the park and the well sites all would be transferred into municipal. So let's go through this and then. I hate to do this, but I wanna get this done, we're gonna go to the zoning map and we're just gonna kind of look where we think they are and I'll, I'll record them and then if we need to make an each, I can look on G I S tonight, just to be sure we got it right.
Okay.
Make sense? Okay, um, then what I did was, I just went through the U D O and I, I, I think I'm close, I may have missed one and we'll have to figure that out, but we need to add municipal in the zoning districts. If you, if you have the U D O up, it's pretty easy to do.
You mean in, in the table?
No, I mean in the U D O.
Okay, yeah, but also because you have a table.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna go through the whole thing. I wanna put a Foxfire, come on up, okay? So if you look at the village ordinances, and you know, when you open them up.
Where are you in the U D O?
Uh, twenty-one, I'll tell you in a second. When you wanna get just to the U D O, you go to part two on the left-hand side, you click it, that'll bring it up, scroll all the way down to the bottom, chapter twenty-one is unified, unified development ordinance. And. I'm in twenty-one dash six point five.
Table, you're, you're going to the table, right?
Huh?
You're going to chunk it about, at the bottom of the ordinance.
No, I'm going to that section, you, but you have U D O with you.
I don't, I don't.
Well, I do right here, so where is it?
It's twenty-one dash, hold on.
I can find, I can look it up.
Twenty-one dash six dash five zoning districts, that's in the U D O.
Six, well, actually, six dash five. Yes.
Well, I'm gonna look at mine.
There's no twenty-one when we look at this thing.
How did I not see a twenty-one?
There's no twenty-one, no.
Yeah, I, I had it all online.
It says chapter twenty-one, but the numbers don't have twenty-one.
But do you have six dash five?
Yes, I do, and that one works.
Okay.
So where are you again?
I'm in twenty-one dash six dash five. Okay, so, all we did here was, in that list of zoning districts, I just added municipal. We, we just gotta figure out everywhere we need to insert it. Okay, does everybody see that one?
Yes.
Alright, Rick, you got it?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So then. If you go to twenty-one dash six dash eight. The last.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, right here.
Where?
Like on, oh, I am, six dash, I mean, say, six dash five, okay, zoning district, you have a table that says RS twenty, blah, blah, blah. And then you have the list defining what they are.
Right.
So added to this will be, will be added the M U N.
Yeah, that's a good point, Teresa, I missed that one, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah, because I'm. You directed us to six point five, but what is it that?
Yep, hang on.
We're gonna do that.
Okay, so I need to add. In six point five in the list, I can't believe I missed that, we'll, um. Oh, you know what, hold on a second, I wrote it, I just didn't put it in the right place, hold on. So that little blurb I got at the top that says what it is.
Yes.
That's actually gonna go under twenty-six dash five, does, six dash five.
Okay, but, but I'm curious as to.
On the bottom.
Whether we, you, you're deciding already or. Lisa's gonna decide where it's going, at the bottom here or?
Well, I have to go on the bottom with the rep, in order, right?
Yeah, and it probably is gonna end up going on the bottom, because if you scroll down.
It'll be fourteen.
It'll be fourteen, yep, yep, and I'm gonna make that change right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, what, what are you talking about, fourteen?
Fourteen is the sub, like the subsection on the, below the. Below the. Below here, so would be, yours is not numbered on.
No, I don't have a number, that's why, I have six point five zoning districts.
No, down here, so these are each numbered on a line. See?
Yeah, but they coincide with this list.
Right, but see, so they're numbered, so one, two, and then enter.
Ah, okay, okay, I understand. Since I'm not on the computer.
And that's where you put the definition.
Okay, but what I'm trying to say is, it's gonna go at the bottom of that, of both lists. Bottom of this one.
So you add, and you add at the bottom, up on the top part, under part, and then.
Alright, I got it.
Fourteen will be the definition.
I wonder why the, this thing don't have it, the one that was printed out.
Okay, just put that on the board. I can't believe I missed that, to be honest with you. Okay, municipal. Yep.
Then you have six point eight is next.
Alright, so we'll take. I'm just gonna redo this a little bit, and I'm fairly busy with this stuff, so we get it in order. Oh, 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 no, no, go back. Okay, got it. Okay. So that's good, we got that, so we'll put municipal as the last one on the list and then we'll put number fourteen, municipal, the, the municipal district is the definition we went through at the beginning, okay?
Okay.
Then, what we had talked about, and I think we were all good with, was that for municipal, we were basically gonna use the same maximum height setbacks, lot coverage, that kind of stuff that we have in village business district.
Yeah.
Which kind of makes sense, because some of our, um. Village property right now is zone V V D and then the well sites are zoned RS thirty, I think, thirty or forty. So are we still good with the setbacks and stuff, guys?
Something I noticed, though, I mean, obviously it was just a cut and paste of the table, I can put it there.
Yeah.
The rear setback is not there, that forty thousand is not minimum lots.
Whoa, 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 okay. Well.
Easy thing.
That's, you hope it's an easy fix.
I think it's. What is it?
What did I do here?
Which one you don't have?
I wonder how that happened.
Front side.
The set, the rear setback for V V is twenty.
Okay, hold on, let me get that fixed, thank you. Oh, it's kind of like we didn't get a. What the heck?
Just gonna line up.
I'm sorry, I don't understand, I see everything here.
No, 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 the, that row is missing the rear setback.
If you look at the rear setback, uh, in online.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay.
Well, that's really weird, okay, so let's move that over.
Okay, then, then, then the front setback is in the wrong place, that's basically what it is.
No, the front's okay, I think.
Look, look, look. At least look at this. Maximum height is only the first column, and you have it as.
You have two.
The second column, at least the way it pr- it prints.
Oh, yeah, no kidding.
The maximum does, takes up.
So everything moved, got moved over, so it's actually there.
Yeah. Maximum, what is that like that?
Just, your computer was acting up like my desk all the time.
Okay, so front side and rear are twenty. Maximum lot size is forty thousand, which means. Minimum lot size, right there. I'll hit the insert button, Mary. Lot coverage is good. Okay, I just fixed it, it's not pretty.
So we have max height's thirty-five.
Yep.
Yeah, you have thirty-five, yeah.
Front thirty-five.
Twenty and twenty.
Yep.
Just in the wrong place.
Sorry to do that while we do this, but. Okay. Yeah, max height thirty-five, front side and rear setback twenty, minimum lot size forty thousand, lot width one hundred and fifty feet, average lot coverage twelve percent. That's, that's a water shit deal, okay? Okay. Then I added a new section. Go to twenty-one. Dash eight dash three dash seven, and I think you're gonna find that that's fence and wall standards.
Man, the one that I have says dog runs.
Yeah, but it's under fence and wall standards, isn't it? Eight point three is fence and wall standards.
Eight point three has, I have. Zoning districts. Eight three three village business district.
Twenty-one dash eight dash three.
Where is that?
Eight dash three, what?
Fence and wall standards. You know how to get into the U D O, Rick?
And, oh, I'm in, I'm still in the ordinance.
But that's how you should be, though.
I'm going by this.
I'm on twenty-one dash six right now.
Okay, so if you go into the search bar at the top.
Yep.
Just type fence and wall.
What's the number?
The number is twenty-one dash eight dash three, I have found it easier to just type in fence and wall. Did you get it?
Cause it's under article eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, but look, it's eight three seven is dog runs in this one.
Right, that's why I'm putting eight, what is ours?
Eight three seven.
Whoops. And mine's.
Yeah, it says dog runs.
Wait a minute, is there an eight, hold on. Thought I was doing so good here. Oh, I'm sorry, should be eight.
Just eight?
No, no.
Dash eight.
Dash eight.
Twenty-one, eight, three.
No, instead of seven, it should be eight.
Yeah, should be eight. Okay, so you can just read that, um, you know, it looked like in that section they were laying out some specifics for specific things, okay? Fencing for the village business district, set fencing in R A, fencing around swimming pools, gated communities, dog runs, so, for our purposes, I think we need to add something that gives the municipal zoning district the ability on an active well site that those well sites are exempt from the fence, regular fence and wall standards.
Okay, you lost me.
Well, yes, because, especially with all the stuff that's going on with the electricity and the grids and everything, so.
Concertina wire thing?
Heck, yeah, man, well, I mean, and I, and they may not go for, don't we have, we have concertina wire around the water tower, don't we?
I don't know.
At the top, I swear we do, I mean, I didn't move that up, I didn't, I didn't watch some World War II flick and then decide that concertina wire. I think we do have it, and, and, you know, the village council may change that, but I think exactly what you said, in light of what happened last December, it is nothing wrong with us chain linking that thing and being absolutely certain that those well sites are secure. And I don't think anybody's gonna have a problem with that.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm lost.
Teresa, this is new.
I understand, but you said you wanna, you're gonna put it eight, three.
Eight?
Eight instead of seven, seven is the dog.
It'll follow dog runs.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so what is it that you brought up?
Well, that, and you got this, you got the, if, you got my email, you got it. What I brought up was that the municipal zoning district needs to have a little flexibility in fence and wall standards, especially when it comes to well sites. I just, I mean, no one's, I don't think anybody's gonna disagree with that.
Do we care if it's higher than six foot even?
Well, I think I'm gonna let Gary Samuels kinda, I'm gonna say, hey, look, we proposed six feet with concertina wire on top. Oops, don't like that.
And a garden.
Yeah, right, and a big dog.
Machine.
And, um, yeah, no, 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 no. Anyway, not to exceed a total height of eight feet, and, and I, I don't know unless you guys have a strong feeling for how high.
I was just asking.
I mean, six feet is pretty high, and if you pop concertina wire, no, that's gonna be tough for some.
Yeah, you're not.
Well, that, then I'm okay. Because I, for. I taught, I, I worked as a teacher and we had a six-foot link fence and the kids were always jumping over it. So it's not gonna deter anybody from jumping over unless there's something else on the.
What do you mean by that last sentence, Mary, no fences should obstruct any access equestrian or reserve utility?
Well, the fence, their fence around the well sites can't obstruct somebody's access to something.
Oh.
And it's not, it, I, it won't be a problem. That was just in the original language, so I left it.
Okay.
Okay, okay, are we good with that one?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's, the next thing I worked on was article eight dash seven point, eight dash seven point two, and it was vehicle fuel tanks. Okay? So, I got to read it and I just kind of reworded it for clarity, because if you look at it, let me just get down there really quick.
Oh, you know, connected, okay.
Everybody got it?
Mm-hmm.
My, uh, internet is done.
Whoa, did I just go down to, hold the phone, I don't like that spinning circle.
I wanna try the phone and see, let me see.
Mine's the, mine don't.
Mine is.
There we go, mine's coming up, it's just a little slow.
I can't reach it.
Um.
And on my phone, I can't reach it either, so.
Well, they've been having some challenges with the internet. Anyway, I re, do you have it up, guys?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I rewrote a, um, to kind of clarify it a little bit, cause I think, and I, now my, search has taken a little while, but I think if you're looking at it in the U D O online, doesn't it say is prohibited in residential areas of Foxfire?
Yes.
Okay, well, here's the thing. I mean, we have two parcels of residential agricultural in Foxfire. That's like five and six acre property, so I can't, I, I think we just need to be a little more specific. So. I, I believe that the way that was worded was intended to apply to multifamily RS twenty, thirty and forty.
But it is not saying that, so.
Right, it is now.
It's gonna have to be changed.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Okay, so it should be on RS twenty, thirty and forty.
Yeah, and then I just put unless prohibited in the foregoing, storage of vehicle fuel gas in excess of twenty gallons is permitted in the other zoning districts, I mean, if you're, like, if you're an equestrian, right, and you've got tractors and all that, I can't imagine that you couldn't have a tank bigger than twenty gallons.
Yeah, makes sense.
And then I just, um. Now, the part I didn't address was. All vehicle, vehicle fuel tanks in excess, oh, of twenty gallons must either be buried or shall be screened. So let's say the cop shop decide they end up getting a fuel tank, which they fucked about before and I don't know if they will, but if it's in excess of twenty gallons, it's either gotta be buried or it's gotta be completely screened, which makes total sense to me. It's just like we screen anything. Make sense?
Uh-huh.
Al, you're frowning.
I'm reading.
Okay. Wow, we're still getting my results here, that doesn't make me very happy.
We're only talking ones here, right?
We're only talking what?
We're, we're, we're not just talking one here, M U N.
Right, exactly, exactly, but. But it would include municipal, does that make sense? Yeah. I just, I, and the council may not agree with that, but I think intention of residential areas was exactly single-family houses, not farms, not equestrian, stuff like that. Okay, can I move?
Yep.
Would, okay, so then, I tripped over signs. I was like, dang, we'll have to insert, um, I think in this one I added M U N as the first zoning category in the table. I don't think that was kind of like alphabetical. And then you can see, and we need to talk about this, but the ones that I thought, whoa, come here. Little thing here. The ones that I thought were not appropriate. There we go. If you get into the table. I kind of looked at village business district and then thinned it down a little more. Obviously, you're not gonna have an estate or farm sign, right? You're not gonna have a residential sign. Hang on, where's my list? Hang on, where's my list? I also didn't think we'd have a residential development sign. I was a little hesitant, I put, I, I don't know that they're gonna go for an electronic message sign, and I don't think we can have a political sign, being as how the village is bipartisan.
Right.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
But you guys look at the list, is there anything else there you think that municipal wouldn't be able to have? I mean, I wouldn't have them having a problem with a window sign, a wall sign, I mean, none of those things I don't think are a big deal. I don't think, would they have a real estate sign? Did I put that in there? Can you see any reason why municipal would have a real estate sign?
No, cause it's, it's for the town, right? It's the, I mean, it's the village, so why would you need a?
I don't know.
Can I ask, you said estate or farm sign?
Right.
What do you mean by estate?
An estate or farm sign is allowed on, and I can't remember the, the parcel size off the top of my head, but it allows for a bigger sign, like a four by four, you know, if you're sitting on thirty acres of property and you wanna announce, you know, your farm sign, this is, you know, George and Sarah's farm, we gave them a bigger sign to do that.
So it's like identifying that particular.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, if, if you're on a regular quote, regular lot, it's just a smaller sign.
That's fine.
Okay, what do we think about real estate signs? Yes or no?
No.
No.
No? Okay, well, Adam, unanimous? All right. Okay. Al, got any comment? You want to know?
I mean, you kind of would follow the V B Z.
A little bit, a little, yeah, that's, that was kind of my example, and then I thinned it out a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Political's not on the thing you sent us, so.
I, I.
Yes, it is there.
The last one.
Yeah, the last one.
It's the last thing.
They were all. Yeah, well, that's weird.
Really?
The e, the, the Word document email is.
Yeah, but it's, are you under eight point five?
Signs?
Yeah?
You're kidding me?
Oh, there's political right there.
What's that?
Okay, 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 so if we're good with that, um, then I also went to definitions. First I looked up, I just wanted to see if there was anything in there, and it says municipality, meaning the village of Foxfire or Foxfire Village. So I added municipal, meaning pertaining to the village of Foxfire or Foxfire Village. As in, if you have municipal property, it somehow pertains to the village.
Yeah.
Make sense?
Yes.
Definitions is sixteen dash one, oh, excuse me.
Why do we, why do we have this at the bottom?
Pardon? Oh, you have that at the bottom because that was some of the research we did for our last time. Okay, so municipal means pertaining to the village of Foxfire or Foxfire Village, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Big Al, you good?
Yes. Which, so what properties right now would be considered municipal?
This one. The cop shop. The fire shed.
Right.
The village park, the village pool, the pickup ball courts.
Wells.
And the wet, and well sites, I, that's, yeah, and then we have another lot I think we own over here. So that would be it. And then the new well site that they're working on, um, if that goes, we can get the property purchased, then that would be added.
So it's not, it's not much?
It's not much, no, it's not much. But I do think it's important that we kind of separate that stuff out. So, because the village has different requirements for things, you know, and if we're gonna put up chain link fence of concertina wire, we may as well legitimize what we're doing.
But then, is there somewhere, cause I, I, I don't know, so, I, but isn't there something already in saying that you couldn't put a political sign up in the front of the town hall? No?
No. No, in order to put a political sign up in front of the town hall, though, you have to get permission from the property owner.
Which is the village.
Yeah, which isn't gonna fly. But now it's definitely not gonna fly. See, like, if the village, if the general store, if somebody came to the general store owner and said, hey, I'd like to put a little political sign up, if he had the store owner's permission, he could place it in the easement, but he's gotta have the store owner's permission.
Right.
Okay, okay, Al, are you good over there?
Um, do you think we should have a more explanatory definition?
Of municipal? You got one?
Well, I think right at the top you do, don't you?
Well, you, you have it up at the, when we started.
Right at the top of your, um.
And municipal does to establish as a zoning district or village owned property.
Well, right, but that, that's, that's the definition of the zoning district.
Oh, now you're defining, I, only municipal, the whole municipal?
So that no one questions what municipal means.
I think it's self-explanatory, so I think that with this small, just identify village of Foxfire or Foxfire Village is enough.
Okay.
I just, yeah, I just look at it standing in its own, my house pertains to the village of Foxfire, you know? You're kind of talking about the government.
No, maybe, maybe you mean, means pertaining to property owned by.
Or, yeah, yeah.
Well, you guys bring up a good point. That's why we do this.
Property owned by.
But does it pertain to anything else?
The village of Foxfire and or Foxfire Village. I don't think it pertains to anything else.
Well, keep talking.
No, I think she's kind of, you know.
You think it's redundant?
What?
There, there's possibility that, you know, that one there is just kind of vague, you know, I think she's right, it relates to the
Property.
Village owned property and government, you know?
Well, if you look it up online, municipal, the definition is relating to a town or government, I'm sorry, relating to a city or town or its governing body.
Well, that's why I, that's why when we started talking like that.
But some were spitting that with what you got, you know?
Hang on a second. Little spinning eye, let's just see what I get. Oh, municipal means relating to a city or town or its governing body. Yeah, maybe we should just use that, or, or if you guys think we don't need it, we just take it out.
No, I, I'm okay with you doing that. The only thing is that I think that same, going back to what Al said, that, you know, that we, our property is in the village, so to clarify, it would be property owned by.
I, I don't know, I, I just think you're, up top, it, it kind of.
Defines it?
Yeah.
Well, we defined the zoning district. Okay?
For, for village owned property.
Okay, well then maybe we don't need it.
No.
Okay, where, where is this, let, let me ask you.
I'm trying, you're playing devil's advocate, i- if you're going to argue, well, that's not municipal, you know, municipal, what, what?
That's a good point, you're gonna say, well, it has a well site.
Okay, so where, 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 where would you put this then? Where does it go? Because there's no number right now, so.
Well, didn't we just change that, though?
No, no, the one you related to, they saw it changed.
No, no, the one at the top here.
Up top, that's under twenty-one six five.
Municipal district is a proposed Foxfire municipal zoning district. And you said the municipal district is established as a zoning.
Right, that's going in as number fourteen, under twenty-one dash six dash five.
I, I.
If we, listen, guys, if you don't think we need it, I'll rip that out.
It doesn't hurt, but it's, I mean, I think it's needed.
But I, but I, I, I see what Mary's doing, let me tell you why. Because, uh, if you go to the U D O, to twenty-one, ooh, to twenty-one. Okay? Where is it? Sixty, sixteen one, right? Where am I? With sixteen one, I'm like. If you go to sixteen, hold on, let me get to it.
Wait a minute, where are you at?
Well, I'm looking for it, and then I'll tell you what I need. If you go to Article sixteen definitions.
Right.
You have definitions for everything else.
Right.
So I don't.
And that's why I was, right?
I think that there should be something in there, because you have it for everything else.
So having said what you just said on the same document, scroll down and look at Whispering Pine's definition of government, and it almost kind of, something like that would fit in there. Just a short word.
Actually, you know what?
My umbrella's in the car here, oh, nice, it'll be dumb.
But we already defined what the municipal zoning district is, so maybe we don't need to define municipal, because municipality, I mean, yeah, I'm kind of starting to agree with you.
But aren't you putting the other one at the beginning here with the other stuff?
The zoning district definition is good.
Yes, but I, but so I.
You, you just, what, what argument, what, what would come, what would come, how are you going to need that definition to explain?
Hey, 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 hey!
Okay, how, how am I gonna explain it?
No, it, what, what would you need to, why would you need to?
Why would I need to? Because you have a section that defines, that gives you definitions on co, a multitude of other things.
But I think I'm starting to agree with these guys, that it does do that, but it's already defined first by the word municipality, pertaining to the village of Foxfire, and then we also have the zoning district definition is, yeah, I sort of think you're right, who's gonna argue with that?
All right, so hold on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you why. I, I feel that.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
Well, that wasn't funny.
You can do that one, so.
Internet went out.
Yeah.
Okay, go on, I'm going by this. Okay, so you have in the U D O, Article two, you have boards, commissions, committee, and organization. And you have planning and zoning board, and in there, there's a definition as to what it is. Now, this, hold on, hold on, hold on. In this section in the back, there is a planning and zoning board as well.
But you're, you're explaining, you're, the definition is what the planning and zoning board its responsibilities are. You don't need to explain what a municipality is.
Cause, well, we've got municipality in there.
Right, so it's, it's in, I mean, it's already in that, it's already in here.
But I don't think that's, this actually gives you a definition, it just says it, you know, that it pertains to property owned by the, uh, village of Foxfire.
Hang on a second, I'll get my computer to come back up here. Okay.
Because in actual, in actuality, in the, at the top, it doesn't define that it property owned by Foxfire Village. In your definition at the very top, it doesn't say anything that it has to do with Foxfire Village. It just gives you a definition of the zoning, uh, section.
Okay, let me get this back up.
I, I don't know that you're gonna get it, but anyways, you wanna look back to mine?
No, I'm just gonna pull my workbook back up.
I think that the definition at the top is defining the actual, the zoning.
Zoning district, yeah, yeah.
This one, it's part of the list of definitions as to what things are.
All right.
That's how I see it. I don't see it redundant, I just.
Okay, guys, what do we wanna do here? I could flip a coin.
I could take the coin when you're done and flip it.
I, I just, I, it's the less, the, when you start adding things and making ordinances larger and paperwork larger, it just keep it simple, and I think.
What are, what are you defining in twenty-one sixteen one? What, what are you wanting to define when you put that in there?
Just what? I don't know, I just thought maybe we need.
Okay, then, then, uh, the, the, uh, the other alternative is to clarify up here, that is property owned by Foxfire Village.
Well, Teresa, you may have a winner there.
Cause it doesn't say, it just.
Well, it says, it says, you just talked of village owned property.
Well, I'm for the, uh, I just simply say, uh, Foxfire Village, so.
No, because it's, it, no, you don't have to say that, because this is Foxfire's U D O.
Okay.
So as long as we have village property, I think maybe we can take municipal out. You think?
You mean the definition?
Definition, yeah, yeah. All right, I'm gonna pull that. All right, now, let's go to everyone's favorite. Rick, you're, you should be so sad you weren't here when we, look at that smile!
Which one is it?
Oh, table six point one, appendix A is how it's listed in the U D O.
Oh, okay, they'll tell you that.
Yeah.
The actual table.
And here's where you're gonna look at it. When you go into village ordinances, you're gonna have to go, just like when Sandy asked me where it was. If the new U D O isn't codified yet, okay? So you need to look under adopted ordinances not yet codified, and it's ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twelve. Okay?
So it's actually not in the ordinance?
So the table is, it's not, the table is still not part of the actual, I mean.
It's done, but you can.
Not, not, not in the actual document.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, you wanna look online, Teresa?
Say it again, where you.
I'm, I'm listening to, I'm one year is out there listening to the.
Go to, go to the website, get on the ordinances, and as soon as the first page that comes up.
Oh, no, I gotta go home.
Yeah, you gotta go, all right, bye.
Are we gonna get through all of this, you think?
Yeah, we will, I'll, I'll take notes for you.
All right.
Yeah.
Under ordinances.
It says adopted ordinances not yet codified. Got it all?
I'm not seeing where the.
All right, I'm very sorry, this is kind of stupid.
Go to village ordinances, the blue button. If you open it up, the first page should say adopted ordinances.
Do we have internet back?
Village ordinances.
Okay?
Yeah.
And at the first page come up, adopted ordinances not yet codified?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going down to ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twelve.
Got it.
All right, now you're gonna click that, and this isn't very pretty, but it's gonna work.
Are we approving this tonight?
I don't know, I don't know.
Oops.
So you're gonna have to go, if you click on it, it comes up real small, right?
When I click on it, it just has the Foxfire Village Council ordinances.
Okay, so scroll down.
I'm listening.
It, it, it just goes, it's just very short.
Uh, keep scrolling, cause the table's right under there.
Yeah, it doesn't scroll anymore.
But!
Twenty, twenty-three dash twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it's under, no, it's on PDF. Foxfire has section one, two, and three.
Yeah, okay, keep scrolling.
Yeah, it doesn't, I can't scroll anymore.
No, because you have to look at this here.
No, those are different. This is twenty-two-three twelve.
No, but you're in the wrong, uh, in the, you're in the wrong place. He's looking at the long, the wrong list. Well, that's your heading, same way you started.
Village ordinances, let me go back.
Al, you got it?
Adopted ordinances not yet codified, that's what I was under.
All right.
And then I went to twenty-two-three twelve.
Here, slide over.
And it says, show the table or what?
I know what you're talking about, the table, and I don't have it here.
Opposite table.
I got it up here, I'll look at it.
Okay. How are we gonna get internet, are you or not?
I don't know, I got it.
Are you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm getting it too, for right now. It's under document center?
No, it's under village ordinances.
Okay.
Code of ordinances, adopted ordinances not yet codified.
Correct, twenty-two-three dash twelve.
Right, that's what I got it.
Yep, okay, hold on.
Adopted five-nine-twenty-three. I click on that. That's all that comes up.
What the heck? Oh, that's whacked!
Unless it's still loading, maybe?
I'm like thinking to myself, Rick, you need to, you need to work on a scroll, Al. Can you, does this, if you, does that make it go across?
No, that's just a.
Oh, yeah, that's that thing that I always mess up on.
This is just.
Well, heck!
I mean, unless it's loading and it's just not there yet.
Ah, shoot, okay.
That's right, I'll follow.
Well. Shoot, 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 or you guys can smuggle up by me and we can look at it. Because what I, here's what I thought about.
Okay, it's under ordinance twenty-two-three twelve?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I get it.
Scroll down. Okay, all right, let Rick sit right there.
Mine's not scrolling, I'll look at this.
Yeah, okay, Al, you wanna look behind, or you got it?
I can't understand why they would have a connection, I can't.
Well, yeah.
Then everything else comes up, with the Foxfire. Then everything else comes up, with the Foxfire, I can't get Google, but I.
Does that take it?
Yeah. Slide over, all right.
Can you see it?
Okay, so.
All right, so. We're, we're there, what is it that we're?
So when I looked at the allowable uses, okay, there aren't that many. And I'm really trying hard to use the table as it is and just add municipal as a category, does that make sense? So that what we do is we really just, if you look at the table, you have, V B is the top, is the first category, right? Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Guys, got it?
Where, where in the table are you?
I'm just at the very top, where it says Table of Authorized Uses. And V B is the first category.
Yes, I'm wondering.
So I would put municipal to the left of V B, and just insert a column, okay? I mean, it, it's, it's a zoning district. And then for uses, as I was kind of going through there, um, I looked at things like, there's really no retail sales or service of repair. There's really no consumer goods sales or service, right? I mean, the village isn't gonna sell anything. Um, financial banking services, food services, none of that applied to me. Real estate rentals and leasing, professional services. I started thinking about what would apply to municipal when we got to Special Purpose Recreation. And in there, it's possible, um, like, if you had a public golf course, could that be municipal? I don't wanna make this too hard.
Well, but you already, you already told me that, you already said that process several times, that the, the actual.
Got it.
Golf course.
Did it finally come up?
I, I just opened it as a PDF.
Oh, okay, good, okay.
So the golf course that is there right now?
Yeah.
It's private.
It's not, uh, but it's listed as just recreational, right?
Yeah, yeah. We're just talking about things that would, were municipal, it would be an allowable use.
So what you're talking about is having the word public in front of it? That would make it?
Well, it already says, under Special Purpose Recreation, it says Public Golf Course.
And we have that already?
Yeah, it's already a category.
Where is it?
I also wondered about, um, recreational sports and, because like we have, um, and fitness and athletic clubs, we've already got a pool. So obviously, that would be allowable in municipal.
Where would we ever put another golf course?
I don't know, that, that might not have been a good choice.
I mean, you could use, I mean, you could use, like, we always thought, if you expanded more pickleball courts.
Well, and you know, pickleball would be recreational sports to me, right?
Yeah.
So that would obviously be allowed in municipal because that's what you have.
Right.
Um, I also thought, obviously, if you continue there and you go to Community Service and Health, Fire and Rescue would certainly be allowed in municipal. Police would be authora- obviously, in municipal. Um, and then, you're at the end. So the other categories I came up with would be, um, I'm just not quite sure how to do this.
Okay, the, the only, the only thing I, thing I hung up with here is that it's not on V, uh, under V B right now, public golf course.
It doesn't matter, I'm not looking at, we're only talking about municipal.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Um, but you could put, I, I thought maybe we could add Municipal Administrative Services, Municipal Utility and Well Sites, Municipal Parks, Municipal Community Center.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because if you have municipal property, you've gotta be able to legitimize the uses.
Well, it would be, and it's almost self-explanatory.
Almost.
Yeah, cause you, what else could you use on municipal property? And what else, what other functions?
Well, I think, I think what you could do though, is like utility and well sites, I think that needs to go in there as an allowable use.
Yeah, because that's for the village use.
Um, and do we have, hang on a second, uh.
I, it's, it's almost like your definition on the top here kind of includes everything up, up here for the, the, the M U N zoning district.
Right, but see, here's the thing, you have definitions for every zoning district, but every zoning district is in this table with allowable uses for that district.
So why can't we just use what's in here?
Well, we can, but it still has to be incorporated into the table. If you, if you create the municipal zoning district, then you have to put it in the table to create the allowable uses.
What was the password for this?
Oh, is it, who knows, Foxfire?
One.
Foxfire.
Capital F, right?
I think.
It's right out, out the door, I don't even, they have this.
Foxfire one.
Go.
Well, I'm trying to reload. Just see, cause there's like a five G and two-point-four G, see if that helps to get the network back.
That one's secured, though.
That's why I needed the password.
Oh. Interesting, okay.
So when you, I'm just trying to get familiar.
I'll keep talking.
So if you, if we add the category, so we have used category, so then it'll be the M U N.
M U N, yep, yep, that's exactly right.
Underneath that, then we would just have to.
Put A's, A's where things were allowable.
So then we could just use what you have here already. So allowable would be Public Recreation, Police, Fire, Utilities and Public Safety.
Okay.
But there, but then you wouldn't have the public golf course because it doesn't say it.
Well, it's not, would, would, would be under there.
Golf, my, my golf course might not have been a good choice.
Cause it's not, because it's public, it's, I mean, while it's privately, it, it's, like, the golf course here is not municipal because it's, it's not run by the village.
Right.
Okay, but, but I think you, you wanna say that we could potentially have our own public?
Well, you know what, like Al just said, and where are you gonna put another golf course?
I mean, you know, well, listen, well, what, what would happen if, so let's just say, God forbid, the resort goes under. And Foxfire Village buys it.
Well, yeah, right, right.
So, I mean, that would then be under, we'd have the zone that.
Then what would happen is you'd have to do a rezone anyway.
Okay, what do you mean by recreational sports in terms of the use category?
Pickleball.
Yeah.
So we already have those.
Right, so, and that's owned by the village, so that's a perfect thing to put into municipal.
What about fitness and athletic clubs, do we have those?
Well, we have a pool, and we have tennis courts.
How about the trails?
That's part of the park. Yeah, so those, those, those kinds of things, I think should go into municipal.
Right.
Yes.
Fire, Fire and Rescue, Police, that all should go into municipal.
I mean, I'm fine, I'm fine with this.
But I think we need to add Utility and Well Sites.
Yes.
And I think we need to add Community Center, because, and we might not build a separate Community Center, it may just be part of this building.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to have it there.
Right, because what, well, like the land used next door is, it's a property, you could technically build on that, a Community Center, and then it would be under the municipal anyway, right?
Say that again?
If, like, the land, the property over here we have, that's empty?
Right.
If you built a Community Center on there.
Well, it's gonna be municipal zoning, but then you still have to have Community Center as a, as an authorized use for municipal.
Yes.
Could there be, could, could there be a broader, like a definition, any, any building that, no, it has to be specific.
That table's gotta be specific.
But I'm, I'm not understanding what's the dilemma about us accepting this list.
Well, I think, I'm not saying there's a dilemma, I think public golf course probably shouldn't come off for the time being. Cause I, I.
I mean, I don't foresee that that's gonna happen.
I think we need to add Utility and Well Sites. I think we need to add Community Center, and I'm looking to see, under Community Service and Health. I'm trying to, I'm trying to legitimize a place for the village hall.
What do you mean? Like, would, that we could use this for something else?
No, no.
What do you have in mind, Mary, doesn't?
Like, if you look under Professional Services, right? It says Legal Services, Accounting, Tax, Bookkeeping, Architectural, blah, 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 okay? Those are all allowed in V B D.
Okay.
So you have this building, and I'm trying to figure out, like, if we say that Police and Fire and Rescue are obviously allowable uses in municipal. Do we need to say that Public Administration?
Well, you have it as Administration Services, is that what you mean?
Yeah, but I gotta, but what I'm trying to think is where to put it.
Oh.
If you, if you didn't have a Community Center added to it, and a few years down the road, we build a Community Center on the property. How hard would it be to then just add that as a use?
It prob- it probably wouldn't. I'm just thinking, hey, if, as long as we're working on it, you know, if we wanna put that in there, and then you may add a Community Center onto this building, which would solve the whole problem. So it doesn't, I, I, I think the one I'm really hard over on is Utility and Well Sites.
And I don't have any problem with all the other stuff, except the public golf, golf course that doesn't.
Yeah, and I just took that off.
I mean, recreational sports, fitness and athletic clubs, Fire and Rescue, Police, we have that already.
Yeah.
We have the Administration Services, we have.
Where do you, okay, where do you see Administration Services?
You added it on the last list on the other side.
Oh, yeah, but I, but, but see, it's not in the, it's not in the number of tables.
That's what I'm saying, that you wanna, you wanna create one. You could not want on the, on the use category?
Yeah, we could, but where would you put it, under Professional Services? Oh, actually, that's probably a good idea. Oh, Office Administrative Services, Office Administration such as Billing, Record Keeping, Personnel, Organizational Planning. Maybe we could just put it under there. What do you think?
Where do you see that?
It is under, it's under Professional Services. It's on my second page that starts with Consulting Services on top.
Got it.
Yeah. And it says Office Administration Services.
Yeah.
And you can put right under there Municipal Office Administration Services.
Well, the definition's pretty good. Billing, Record Keeping, Personnel and Organizational Planning.
Right.
Okay, does that work?
Yeah.
Are you back in, dude?
I think I just got back, yes, so now I will go to the village. And you said go to the village ordinances.
Okay, then where, where does the utility go?
Well, I don't know.
What's on there?
Um, it's, 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 it's that guy right there.
That what?
Yeah, definitely, that bad boy. Just. All right. So Office Administrative Services, okay. Okay.
Uh.
So where?
In a way, it is a community service. I mean, the water is not there for the village, for the people here, but for the entire village.
Well, yeah. Yeah, actually, you know what, that's probably a good place to put it. It is community service. What do you think, guys?
Yeah.
Which one?
Utility and Well Sites. Community Services and Health.
Yeah.
That's why you have Fire, Rescue, Police, and then you can have. The utility well.
I don't know, what do you think, I think that's a pretty good idea, actually.
What, what category was that under?
Uh, it's under Community Service and Health.
And which one?
I mean, it sounds odd, but it is for, it's a community service.
I would take, in my list, where I put Utility and Well Sites, I would put Buda as a, as a Community Service and Health.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, then let's go, do we need to have, go back up to Special Purpose Recreation?
Well, that, the recreational sports and fitness would go under the recreational.
The Community Center under there.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
All right, so we're creating recreational sports, fitness and athletic clubs, Fire and Rescue, Police, Office Administrative Services, Utility and Well Sites is an add under Community Service and Health. And Community Center is an add under Special Purpose Recreation, okay? Now, do we need to put anything about, I'm surprised we didn't have this in the first one, about the park?
Well, we have a park, do we have a park?
Right, right. How would you put park, what, you think we need to put park under Special Purpose Recreation?
Is, park's not in here already?
No, it's not. No, it's not.
That would be Special Purpose and Recreation, then.
I, that's what I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Kind of museum in there as well.
What is the pickleball, pickleball courts in the pool under right now?
Uh, well, they're currently under Recreational District, okay? And they'll move over to municipal.
So, recreational sports.
Yeah, I would, I would put it under, uh, Special Purpose Recreation.
And just add parks?
Right, because record, under that Special Purpose, recreational sports, it says make.
I agree with you, the Community Center could go there too.
Yeah, it already says.
Because it is a Special Purpose Recreation.
For parks.
Okay, come on, Community Center, yeah, we put Community Center in, in Special Purpose Recreation.
And the parks as well.
The park over there too.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
And then the rest, do we have like three, four things on?
That's, I mean, I'm telling you, we, we skimmed the table and then the council skimmed it way further, so, I mean, that's.
Well, but, but they have something to work with, if we didn't give it to them, they wouldn't have it.
Okay, so are we good with our list?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we wanna clean it up and find out, uh?
You know what, let me do this.
Approve it of the next meeting?
The Village Council is gonna address family and limited subdivisions at the Work Council, at the Work Session, and then call for a public hearing. They're also gonna address our recommendation to increase the allowable square footage for accessory building in lots less than one acre to four hundred at that same Work Session.
So it would be good that they had this.
It would be great if they had this one too, because if you go to call a public hearing, you may as well do them all.
And I, I feel comfortable with approving it.
Um.
I mean, I think we went through it thoroughly, we did all, we understand it, right? We had discussion on it.
Al?
Sorry, I was looking up the, uh.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were thinking.
I, I am, I'm listening.
I mean, I wondered, do you think we have it solid enough to approve it and send it?
I think so.
The, the only thing, for whatever it's worth, and I, I know you're, you're great, Mary, so don't take this wrong.
No, I'm not gonna take it wrong.
I would say that, I know you're gonna work on this because you're great. That maybe you send it to us and we, I mean, we can approve it right now, but then you send it to us for us, you know, I mean, so many eyes see better than yours.
Just can't wait to have that park in there.
Maybe we can, you know, we, we might not find everything perfect and not, not say anything.
Let me just think about this for a second. We need a recommendation to approve and send to the council, if that's what we wanna do. And we also need to add. Let me ask you this. How about I talk to the mayor and go, hey, look, this is what we have, are you guys, do you guys wanna take this up at the Work Session? And if he says yes, we'll just pull a quick special to approve it.
Okay.
If he says.
No, we got too much.
Or he might go, oh, I, we gotta think, then I'm not gonna, then we just wait.
He might really, they might really wanna see this.
Well, here's what's hard about this one, usually when you write a zoning ordinance, it's inclusive, all right? I mean, you sit down and you write it. This one is a little different, because this is the first zoning district we've written since we have the U D O. Which means you just can't put it all in one section, you have to go through every single section of the U D O where something applies.
It might be too much for them to handle, or even.
Well, I think it's too much for them to handle, I just need to see what else they got going on. So let's leave it like this, okay? Um, you trust me to add the parcels, or you wanna do it? You trust me to add the parcels or you want to do it right now?
No, no, you go ahead, I mean, I have it.
Okay, let's just save it.
Not make any difference if we look at them, because you're the one that knows about it.
Okay, but I know what I'm looking for, so we can do that, okay? Then let's just, let's just save it, okay? I'll talk to the mayor, if, if he says, yeah, by all means, bring it, then we'll just, we'll just need a special meeting before the work session, okay? So let's go back to the agenda. Oof, I think, um, let's go to, dang, it's 20 to 7. Let's go to-
That's why I was asking you, it looks like it's a lot of stuff here. Well, maybe the terms is something quicker.
Let's go to temporary, dang, let's go to temporary structures, let me just bring you guys up to speed really quick. Because Al, you weren't here, right?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, so when we talked about temporary structures, what we sort of came to the conclusion was that they should be used for construction or remodeling. They require a permit. There didn't need to be a cost for a permit, they just require a permit, okay? Um, they had to be taken down within 10 days of the issuance of a CO or certificate, certificate of occupancy or final inspection, okay? And the remodeling permitted an initial length of time of 90 days with an option for an addition, for additional time at the zoning administrator's discretion, maximum of six months. One time per year. We said the maximum size would be 300 square feet. They needed to be placed within the setbacks. And we said that, that they couldn't be used for storage outside of construction or remodeling. So in other words, if somebody's going to do a handyman project, like he's going to, I don't know, retile his bathroom or something, that's not big enough. You know what I mean, no, if a guy's going to do it himself, I mean, he might have to do it after work, I mean, it could take him, it could take him a while to do. If you got a contractor. So, are you coming as a participant?
No, uh, to ask you how long you're going to be here. We've got that prayer service that was going to be
Oh.
out there with the lightning and the rain.
What time do you need us done by?
Seven o'clock-ish, can you be done?
Yeah, we'll be done before seven.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be done before seven, yeah, yeah. So that means we're going to finish this?
I would, I would, uh, since we're breaking our time anyway.
Now, I put this in, I, those are my notes in the, from the agenda.
What was the first part of it? I missed the first part of yours.
What, what we talked about was temporary structures in residential districts. We said that for construction, you know, like, and this comes up because we got one on social camera.
Yeah, I actually gave you my whispering part's input.
You did?
But-
Yeah.
You got, I didn't go to the last meeting where you came up with this, so, I wasn't listening very good when you described the first paragraph.
We were a little, we got a little more specific, just saying that they were for construction purposes. They needed to have a permit. There's not going to be a cost for the permit, but you got to come to the village and say, hey, I'm putting this up. Um, they had to be taken down within 10 days of the issuance of the CO or the final inspection.
Okay, the CO is-
Certificate of occupancy.
The final inspection, okay.
Um, for remodeling, well, in fact, that was for construction. For remodeling, it still needed to have a permit. The initial length of time we said was 90 days with an option for additional time at the zoning administrator's discretion, maximum of six months. And we put one time per year.
Is this something that we're going to board on?
No, no, I got, we got, no, we're going to get the outline of it and then we need to, um, figure out where it's going to go to. Um, stuff, the, the storage has to be placed within the setbacks. Makes sense?
Yes.
Maximum size, 300 square feet, which is a 15 by, 15 by 20, that's a pretty good size.
What I'm asking is at some point are we going to afford it?
Yeah, at some point, we're going to actually incorporate it.
My recommendation is, since you have to explain it to us as well,
Yeah.
you might want to-
Well, what I'm trying to figure out is-
Not to save your breath, right?
No, I think, I think we have the guts of it, right?
Yeah.
What I'm wondering is, where do we put it in the UDO?
Oh, okay.
I would think by the gates and fences and, right, was that eight, 21-8?
I don't know, let's take a look.
All right, where do we put it in the actual UDO?
Would it be under the, the accessories?
Well, I'm wondering if it would be under accessory buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could.
But it's temporary.
It doesn't matter, you can say it.
Could you have a, like a subsection for temporary?
You could call it temporary accessory building. Couldn't you?
Like 21-8-1, number 14 would be tense. Or, or temporary.
I don't know, I don't know.
Because I think that's how it does it under, like, when I looked up from Pinehurst, I think that's how they had it.
It sounds good to me, I agree.
Well, if I can get it in there.
Yeah, because you said eight or six.
21-8-1, accessory buildings, and then have it number 14.
So regulation of particular uses and areas, yeah, that makes sense. That's what the chapter eight is about, article eight is regulation of particular uses and areas.
Yeah.
Put it's under there.
Would you call it temporary structures?
Temporary, temporary-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Buildings or-
Well, no, it's not a building, but structure.
It's not, it's not a building.
I know, but we call, we call accessory buildings in 21-8-1.
Yeah, and that's-
It's a building, it's a structure, so, just to stay within line.
Could you, could that, could that be changed to accessory buildings and structures, the, the title, no?
No, we have enough problems with accessory buildings.
I don't, I don't think that that would, I don't think that that would make a big difference.
Yeah, temporary, temporary is the key word there.
Yeah.
But I think that is the place, though.
Yes, I, I think so too.
I was hoping we could stick it in the code of ordinances and not have to do a public hearing, to be honest with you. I'm just not sure that's going to work.
But, no, I mean, aren't we, are we setting it up as?
Yeah.
As an ordinance kind of thing?
Yeah, well, like, we did trash cans under the general, you know, trash cans didn't go to a, um, yeah, trash cans did go to a public hearing, did they? Hang on a second.
You know, if you look at, you know, 21-8, 21-8-1 is accessory buildings.
Yeah.
21-8-1-1 is additional accessory buildings.
But they're not really a building.
So, yeah, well, you could, 21-8-1-1-1-
What, A?
Temporary structures.
Yeah.
The, the kind of one would fit.
21, 21-8-1A, temporary.
Something like that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and the 8-1-1, is that what you say? Yes.
Call it 1-1-1 or 1-1A.
Or 1-1-2, because there is no 1-2.
There is no 8-2?
An 8-1.1 is there, so it could be 8.1.2.
That's travel trailers.
That's travel trailers.
Where?
The next one, travel trailer, recreational vehicle, boat.
It could be 8-1.3.
This, this, okay, sorry, this thing is upside down here, never mind.
Yes, it could.
Could it be 3?
Could. But I mean, I don't know how she's got this set up, I mean, if you could take it to another character. 1-1-1 or 1-1A.
Well, actually-
Why don't you ask Lisa, which she might give you a very good answer? It's just a, I have-
Yeah, it looks at there.
Do whatever you want.
Yeah. And then actually, we could just call it temporary storage.
Yeah.
And just, I'm, I'm a little-
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know, accessory buildings are permanent.
Yeah.
And I think we need to make the, the, the separation between permanent and temporary very, very obvious.
And that storage is so-
Makes good sense.
All right, so let's try this, let's try. All right, let me just put, let me just play with that about maybe having it be temporary structures. Would you guys be all right with that and we'll make it 8-1.3?
Mm-hmm.
Ricky, good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, then I would say, based on Mr. Don coming in here, we probably-
Oh, new business will be taken into account.
Yeah, I think let's just table it, um, darn. The land use plan review is probably the most important thing, and here's what I might do. I might go in and review that document and put comments on it and send it out to you guys because the land use plan doesn't go to a public hearing. The land use plan is a guiding document, it's kind of like the long range plan. The long range plan doesn't go to a public hearing, so I'm fine-
Oh, you thought about this one right?
Yeah, I'm fine if we go back and forth an email on the land use plan. It's not, it's not like we're, we're doing an ordinance, would that work for you guys?
Sounds good, yeah.
All right, okay, so then let's go ahead.
Did you see, I mean, I read it, did you see something, it looks like it needed 2020?
I want to, I want to look at it in light of RE5.
It's a review in three years.
Yeah, and we're due, we're due.
We're there, it's 2020.
Yeah, exactly, we're right on time. Okay, so, any other, and then let's, I need a motion to table PZ board terms and multi-genre.
Okay, I hope that we table the last two items here.
Okay, second?
I agree.
Okay, we're good, okay. And then I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I knew you would, I'll second it. You good?
Good.
Adjourned.